Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, April the 5th, 2022. The time is now 6:00 P.M. The regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Trinidad will now come to order. Would you please rise for your pledge of allegiance? Name one, would you please, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Call roll, please.
DeBono.
Here.
Criago.
Here.
Ogoltry.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Williamson.
Present.
Rico.
Here.
Item two, or excuse me, item one, first item on there is proclamation for the Week of the Young Child, which I'll read. Officer of the Mayor Trinidad, Colorado proclamation, Week of the Young Child, April the 2nd through the 8th, 2022, and we do have a child here, I guess. Very fitting. Whereas the work from the Los Angeles County Early Childhood Advisory Council, South Central Council of Government, Early Learning, CDI Head Start, DCEN Pod, Trinidad School District, Aguilar School, Oney School, Merrill School, Branson School, and Kim School in conjunction with National Association for the Education, and young children are celebrating Week of the Young Child, April the 2nd through April the 8th, 2022. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for children in our community, and whereas by calling attention to the need for high-quality early childhood services for all children and families within our community and state, these groups hope to improve the quality and availability of such services. And whereas, public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to our children's futures, and whereas the future of our community and state depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Now therefore, I feel up to Rico, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, on behalf of the entire Trinidad City Council, to hereby proclaim April the 2nd through the 8th, 2022, as Week of the Young Child. And the City of Trinidad, Colorado, and urge all citizens during this week and throughout the month of April to celebrate our youngest learners by recognizing and supporting the needs of young children in our community. They witness where I appear and to set my hand and cause the seal of this city to be affixed. Day of Phil, pretty cool. April the 5th today, actually, 2022, I changed that. Do we have someone here to receive? Thank you for everything they can do.
On behalf of the Lunar Early Childhood Council, please accept the appreciation bags we've received for you folks. There's also our updated resource guide. If you have any questions, please let me know. My name is Jennifer Yates, and I appreciate everything.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Council, have any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to table A B to further, for a further work session, for further development of that.
Okay. Okay, well, those will bring it up and then we'll table it at that point. Okay, you can do that. So notice it changes, that's fine, okay? Any other changes that council would like to make? Entertain a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Call a vote?
DeBono.
Yes.
Criago.
Yes.
Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Mr. Valentine?
Yeah, I think you're required, Mayor. Thank you.
Item four, petitions or communications, all are written. Please note that you have five minutes and Mr. Downs will be the keeper, the timekeeper. First on, we have Lehigh Elegant Lopez.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Nice to have you let me speak tonight. I'm going to speak to you with your hats tonight. One, as a downtown business owner, and second one is the president of Trinidad Arts Festival, which is my nonprofit. The first bit is about festivals in general in town. First of all, I don't think we have enough. All of our best days at Fisher's Big Outfit are have all been festival days. Even on times when the festival is completely unrelated to outdoor recreation or any of our things, we continue to have excellent business on festival days. I see a spike in my computer graphic and I know exactly when a festival day happened. I think it's great when you shut down the downtown. I think it improves the sense of community and it definitely improves our bottom line as a business owner. Second of all, as the president of the movie forum, Trinidad Arts Festival, this will be our first year doing arts festival in Trinidad this year on July 17th, at Chino Park. Why would you continue to, I heard this in the paper, that they're going to limit festivals? Why would you do this? Why would you, A, hurt downtown business and B, limit having festivals in town that are going to do really neat things for the community? Bring the community together, have vendors that will provide tax revenue for the community, and just make it a fun downtown place. I think it would be really hurtful to have the place only have four festivals a year. I think you should have more. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott Zietjes?
Mayor, Council. It's been 90 days since you approved my liquor license. The last time I was here, I asked you to help me get my liquor license. You all approved. I still don't have it. The continuing comments that I'm going to make tonight are of my opinion. Based on my research, talking to people in the community, this is what I would say. I looked at the city charter and I understand that you all are limited in what you can do. I knew that the last time I was here. I understand that. And I understand that your go-between, your interaction is with the city manager. And as I recall, and I suppose I could bring up the appearances, the city manager has been here for every one of the meetings, from going through to present, to getting approval, to asking where is mine. And I also understand Mr. Valentine is about to retire. However, he's here tonight. He's presumably still on the payroll. And I don't understand why, when the city charter says that the interaction with the council is with the city manager and the city manager with the staff members. And I also understand it clearly says in the city charter that the person to issue the liquor license is the city clerk. This is what my research tells me and it's also what my lawyer tells me. I would say that myself and my lawyer had tried to go to the city attorney. My opinion, he's nothing but disruptive. Doesn't speak with any research or rules or regulations. My attorney has tried to do that. There's no grounds for refusing to issue the liquor license. It is, by my opinion, an abuse of power. I'm not certain why, in my case, that I'm not getting the liquor license, but all of the obstacles and objections and reasons were known ahead of time. There was an opportunity, Mr. Mayor, when you put this up for vote, if there was any objections, nobody spoke forward. I would tell you that part of me standing here and coming forward, I understand, is a moot point, perhaps it's worthless. But I also understand that there's video and the rest of the community is seeing this. They've come to offer me support. They've come to ask me, why is this not being issued? I've spoken with people at the state level. It's going to bring a lot of bad publicity to this community that I don't want, but it's going to. It's not a threat, it's a reality. I would say, if you're not willing to issue me my liquor license, then give me my money back. I paid an application fee, give it back to me. Write me a letter, for whatever reason you find, to not issue the liquor license, send that to my business and give me a refund. You hurt the community, you hurt the taxpayers, you hurt the state. I want to stay in this community. This is unacceptable. I'm frustrated, somewhat angry, I suppose. I understand he's just doing his job. That's what the city attorney does. Whatever his clients ask him to do, when you go to court, you get two attorneys, they're each committed to their side of the story. I get that. And he's committed because he wants to stay in the city attorney, so he does that. But it's obstructionist. When there's no facts and there's no rules, there hasn't been. Mr. Mayor, when you asked him to present the rules of the regulations regarding the boundary, I knew that day there was none, but I respectfully stood back and allowed you to ask him to say that to him, and I didn't argue, but I knew it wasn't there. If you want to create rules and regulations for boundaries, publish them, I assure you I would follow them. But if you're not doing that, then please don't use it as an obstacle.
Five minutes, 13 seconds. Thank you all for your time. Thank you. Jerry, how about you?
Mr. Mayor, council members. Last five, yeah? Good evening. Fellow Trinidadians here, I hope everyone's doing well. I'd like to reiterate a comment I made at City Council work session last month at the Colorado Tourism Convention a few years ago we attended. Then Governor John Hickenlooper told everyone, if you want to grow your economy, have more events. It seems counterproductive to author any legislation that will limit the number of events at any time of the year, especially during the summer months when the opportunity for the tourism dollars are at their greatest. I've not met any business owner whose business was open during the events and didn't have a banner weekend during those events, Trinidadio, whatever the event may be. Our business, Curly's Beans and Gifts, we sell a lot of different gift items, Indian jewelry, and we also have great days, great sales on those days. And in addition, Trinidadio's never had any kind of altercation or, you know, bad things happening during the events. Some business owners and managers certainly have their holdbacks than are reluctant to open. They might want to consider some temporary signage. You could have a sign restricting the number of patrons in the store at one time, or perhaps a sign that says no groups more than two, no backpacks, no one under the age of whatever you decide is an appropriate age, and also a sign saying no public restrooms. And most of their concerns would be handled just by a few simple signs. Thank you for your time.
Just to mention something, those of you that have spoken on this, if you want to stick around till we get to item A B, to hear what we're going to be discussing on, in that regard, so. I want to tell management to move forward with other items on the agenda. Item five, consent agenda approval, approval of the meeting minutes, March 5th, 2022. Approval of the bills for $6,276,878.24. Item C, approval of the payroll, April the 2nd, 2023, 2 through April the 15th, 2022, amount of $392,584.05. Motion to entertain a motion?
Some move.
Second? Okay, call roll?
DeBono.
Yes.
Criago.
Excuse me.
Yes. Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, we have public hearings. Item 6A, public hearing for consideration of ordinance vacating a portion of the Beach Street, Short Street, and Arizona Streets right of way in the original town site of the City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Hearing is now open. Mr. Just? I'll give some information on that, please.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. Basically, this is just a follow-up from the first reading that we were, it wasn't properly recorded, and that's what the process here is, what we're doing. Not recorded, vacated, excuse me. So this is just to clarify and basically do it the way the state requires vacation. So that's what we're, that's what we're following up with.
And that was vacating that portion over here by the church?
That's correct.
Okay, because there was an issue with that usable or whatever. It should have been vacated or?
Well, this portion is, is it the football field?
Oh, okay.
The church property that hasn't come through yet correctly?
No, this is, the block next door was platted in Terry's West Edition, I believe, back in the early, late 1800s, early 1900s, whenever that was platted. Right-of-ways were platted through that whole block. Never developed when they platted the block for the sale of property over there. It was the time to clean it up. The streets were never used for public use, were never, you know, driven on. It was always as is, pretty much. So this, we filed the plat with a note that vacated, saying maybe streets are hereby vacated on that plat. Come to find out, as Mr. Just spoke, we, by state statutes, we actually have to have an official vacate ordinance, so that's what you have before you, hope that helps.
Council, any questions? Mr. DeBono?
No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Green.
No, just a clarification rather than a question. So when Beach Street comes down there by, between Stay Fit and Curly's, that is still public?
That, correct. That section is still public, but as it goes into the parking lot near the convent.
Okay, and that's the section we're vacating?
That's part of, that's one of them, Beach, Arizona. And Short Street. And if you know Short Street, it's actually over, kind of by the high school football field, and it's platted through there and comes all the way over here, but it's never, never been out of contact.
No questions? No questions? No questions? Okay, I don't have any questions either. Thank you, Mr. Just. Anybody in the audience wanting to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance change? Not? Hearing closed. Item 6A1, second reading of an ordinance indicating a portion of Beach Street, Short Street, and Arizona Street rights of way in the original town site of the City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Entertain a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call a vote?
DeBono.
Yes.
Criago.
Yes.
Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item B, another public hearing. Public hearing for consideration of an ordinance authorizing master equipment lease purchase agreement dated March 10th, 2022, between the city and lessee and Republic First National Corporation as lessor for the acquisition of a 2022 Komatsu WA320-8 wheel loader, and that is for an amount of $286,747.85. Hearing is now open. Ms. Navarette?
Good evening, Council. This is just the second reading for the financing for the Komatsu wheel loader. The interest rate is 2.85%. We were, we will put a $50,000 down payment on the equipment, so the financing amount is $217,800. And there have been no changes since the first reading.
Council, have any questions? Mr. DeBono?
Uh, no, sorry, don't.
No, sir.
No.
No questions.
No questions, Mrs..
Okay. I don't have any questions either. Anyone in the audience or online wanting to speak for or against the ordinance? As agreement? Hearing done. Hearing is closed. Item B1, second reading of an ordinance authorizing the master equipment lease purchasing agreement dated March 10th, 2022, between the city as lessee and Republic First National Corporation as lessor for the acquisition of a new 2022 Komatsu WA320-8 wheel loader, amount of $286,747, down payment of $50,000, which leaves a $217,800 payout. Entertain a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call a vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes.
Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business, A8, authorization to purchase of a 2022 Ford F-550 service truck with crane for the fleet department. Entertain a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Just?
Hi, Ken. So this truck is a service body. It's going to be used by our fleet maintenance. It has a 7,500-pound crane on it, so when we go out to the landfill, we have the ability to change our own tires off the loader's heavy equipment. We can pick engines with it. We can handle, there's some heavy parts on our shredder or shredder that we have out there. So it, it's a piece of equipment that's been requested. We tried to get it last year, we didn't. But here, it's a nice service body. It's, it's got toolboxes on it, it's got an air compressor as well. So basically, our guys were just outfitting them with the tools that, we're running five mechanics now, and it seems that the fleet maintenance is, what I hear back that I'm getting from the other department heads, is excelling. So we're basically providing the tools for them to do their job.
You know, I've been out to the landfill a couple of times and, you know, we've had some, I guess, breakdowns at the landfill, and I've seen Mike Wagner out there a couple of times, and maybe they're doing some specialty work, but it could be that, I guess what you're saying is that some of the work that we can be doing, might save some money in the long run, and of course, this piece of equipment can be used for other services for our other needs as well.
That's correct. It's not exclusively the landfill.
And that is an amount of $164,877. And get some questions from council. Mr. One?
I have none.
I have a question. I don't know. It's not pertinent to this purchase, but you know, I was thinking of something when you were talking, because we have updated the fleet a lot over the past couple of years. Does the city garage staff, are they still able to service these vehicles because of the updated electronics? And is that a problem?
No, we, we have the latest part of the software that we have. We're able to key in the software, brand-new police cars, whatever, they have the ability to service them.
Okay. Nice to know. Very nice. Thank you.
That's a good question. I'm good. No, I think it's a good idea. I, I work for the city. I know it's, crankham is handy sometimes, and we'd really need that, that make it convenient for everybody.
Is there any delay, delay on this deliberation?
My understanding, it's, it's, it's up there and it's at their yard, so.
Good.
It's not a 2023.
It's actually 2020.
It's good. Mr. Thurman, no questions? Do anything. Is the service body already installed or that needs to happen yet?
No, it's, the truck's coming outfitted, has a service body, crane will be on the service body, the compressor will be.
I mean, that, that work has been done to your knowledge?
It is. That's where, that's where we found the truck. And it was, is it Elsors or?
Sorsa.
Sorsa. They say the word. Say the word. So it made it really.
Service bodies are hard to get right now, but I, I have no questions.
This is a brand-new unit, right?
Brand-new.
I have no question.
It's a vast city of all kinds. It's four-wheel drive as well, so.
Call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes.
Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Just.
Thank you.
Item A B, first reading of an ordinance, mandating chapter three, alcoholic beverages and code of the ordinance for the City of Trinidad regarding alcohol beverage festivals, and setting the hearing date for consideration of said ordinance, 6:00 P.M. on April the 19th, 2022. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce that.
Okay, motion?
Was that tabled?
Not, it wasn't. He just made the recommendation.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. All right. Thank you.
So we need a motion, second, or last?
Yeah, second.
I would like to make a motion to table this ordinance for further discussion.
Okay, any particular reason? Part, any particular reason?
I just feel that we need to make sure it's further developed and to make, make sure that it properly works for all of Trinidad. I think it's a super important thing that we're regulating there, and it needs to be a little further developed and have more, potentially more public input. So I'd just like to see this settled.
Okay, discussion, any discussion? Mr. DeBono? Ms. Criago?
I, I just want, you know, piggybacking on some of the comments during open conversation. People have to understand in the community that you're looking at a issue through one set of eyes. We don't have that luxury here on City Council. We look through thousands of pairs of eyes and we're trying to make decisions to accommodate everybody in this community. You know, I have had some people come to me with issues about the festivals downtown. We're trying to get to a point where we can all agree on what we come up with. That's what this is all about. And we are tabling this, we would, I, I'm speaking for myself, and I'm sure council will agree. I want some input, but when it comes time for input, I want people to tell us what they want to do and have a communication. This is what I do. But see, what is easy for you is not sometimes easy for us, because there's complications, there's legalities that we have to follow. So we're not doing this to be policemen. I don't want to be that. I just want to be the voice of the people of the City of Trinidad. So you have to give us that little leeway so we can work on things and come to a good conclusion. I, I ask that of you. Thank you. I ask that of you. Thank you.
No comment other than it'd be a good idea to work on it, yeah?
Yeah, I didn't understand this to be limiting the number of special events that we were gonna have in the city. I thought this was specifically for alcohol licensees who wanted to have a festival. And so I'm, I was reading through all this today and over the weekend, and I'm trying to understand what this does in addition to our special events. Um, is it, there are issues about the size of it, where it's supposed to be, that's not, that is not clear in the proposed ordinance. So I do think there are a lot of questions that, on my first look at this at the work session, I didn't quite perceive. And when I look at it now, I do think we do need to do some more work and to clarify for people whether we are saying there are only four festivals a year on main streets, or is that just these alcohol festivals? Or is that special events or what it is? Because it's not clear to me.
Um, yeah, we definitely need to talk about this more and hopefully can get it started before festival seasons. So, uh, you know, let's keep talking about it, be open and encourage more, um, small businesses to start making to these means for this particular event.
I would say, I mean, if we table it, we're going to function under our already existing guidelines, correct? So, I mean, we're, it's not as if we're functioning without guidance. So I really think it could just use more development and ensure that we're doing the right thing, as Councilwoman Grego mentioned. That we're doing the right thing for everybody, and it is always tricky. So, um, that's the only idea.
You know, I reminded like today, from what I'm hearing, is there's some not real clarification on some of the issues that surrounds this. Uh, because it's going to impact people downtown in the main areas, may impact other areas as well. So I think that just a good, uh, work session to follow, like you said, to get good clarification, to get a good understanding as to what we're getting into, so that we don't then follow with our businesses and what we're actually trying to do. So we have a motion on the table. To table? Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call a vote, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item eight C, retail warehouse storage permit, request filed by Pickle's League, a professional baseball club, LLC. Entertained a motion?
Sound move.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Garrett? Can I get us some information on that, please?
Um, there is, council will recall, the Pickle's League has a three-two, what is it? Permanent alcohol beverage license on campus at Central Park during the baseball season. And because they have had difficulties with the working and theft of the product when they're not on site, um, it's become problematic, and so council and manager is seeking an off-site storage warehouse permit to be able to store the alcohol safely and securely so that they don't suffer the losses.
Okay. Let's get some discussion from council. Mr. Debona, anything?
No, I think there's, that's an issue with that. I think that's.
Mr. Grego?
Just a clarification, because the alcohol is gonna be stored at a marijuana business.
No question.
Is there any conflict state law?
Mr. Downs, you have any question on that?
It's actually gonna be stored.
Could you hold on a minute, please?
So, and thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Schultz was saying that it's gonna be stored outside. So there can't be the selling of marijuana and alcohol at the same establishment? I don't know of any prohibitions saying that you can't store alcohol on a licensed marijuana premises. I don't, I don't think the code really has contemplated that eventuality, but I don't know of any prohibitions. Just as long as there's no sale of beer from that location, I think they're okay.
That's good. I just wanted to clarify.
Good question.
May I also add that the storage is not part of the licensed premise for the marijuana business?
Okay.
So, um.
Okay.
I don't think there's going to be a conflict because of that. If it were actually inside of the doors of the facility, I think that would be allowed. But because it's basically outside of the building, the licensed premise typically, it couldn't be okay.
Okay. Thank you.
No, no questions.
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Uh, the only question I have is this, gonna be a permanent or temporary, uh, storage, this building? It's one of those... You wanna give us some information on that?
Yes.
Come on.
Thank you.
As I said, my question is, it's one of those metal containers?
It is.
Is it gonna be there permanent or just temporary?
No, it's there permanently.
Okay. My question is, of course, this is a discussion that we're gonna have, I think, in the work session coming up about storage containers and all the issues. If it's, if they're permanent, they're supposed to be made to look more appealing, like the building that's there. But of course, we've got issues in the community about other storage containers that are placed all the way around town. So, you know.
I might interject here. Um, they're allowed in industrial zones.
They are? Okay. Okay.
So it's not in a neighborhood. It's, it's actually industrial.
Industrial. Okay. Then you're, there you go to go then. Okay? All right. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Any other discussion? Call a vote, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item eight D, consideration of change order for Fox West Theater abatement from Blue Sky for sixty-two thousand, four hundred and one dollars and eleven cents. Entertained a motion?
Sound move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. What we have before us is, um, Blue Sky, uh, council approved their contract phase two of the abatement of the Fox Theater. And while they were in there, they removed the ballroom floorboard that was damaged and buckled. I don't know if you've seen that from the water damage, but when they removed that to get to the asbestos-lined steam pipes, that water caused some of that asbestos to crumble and actually kind of float underneath that crawl space. And as, as the water went away, it all settled in the dirt. Uh, we had the C D P H E, the Department of Health inspectors down. They made a determination, tested it. Um, there was enough particles of asbestos in that soil that they recommend we take two inches of that dirt out as part of the abatement. Uh, Blue Sky submitted this change order. Um, they also submitted another change order, which was to just lay down visqueen, uh, material, fifteen-mill encapsulated, marked that there's asbestos under here. While I'm talking to the architect, that crawl space is gonna be used for HVAC, plumbing, electrical pulls. Um, the floor down there has to be kind of supported. It's, you know, kind of a little springy, a long span on those joists. So we're gonna have to have piers in there. It's not gonna work. We'll puncture that, that fifteen-mill plastic. So, um, it's recommended that we go with the removal of two inches of soil under the entire area. Um, the change order fits within our EPA grant still because we had some contingency built into that grant. So, but it's pushing the upper limits of the grant now, um, the five-hundred-thousand-dollar EPA grant that we had, plus our match. But, uh, it's my recommendation to turn them loose and get that hazard abated.
Okay. Any questions from council? Mr. Debona?
With the change order, Mike, it's not gonna cost the city anything more?
Well, I'd like to say no, but with construction and everything, they'll scrape that two inches maggot, haul it to a special landfill, then they'll do air sampling on the air, so many air changes to see if there's still any asbestos. Um, if there is, we'll see what the health department says. But, um, we feel pretty comfortable with the health department's recommendation that two inches of soil will get, get it out of there.
Rico?
No, I have no questions.
No, no.
Any other plumbing contingencies that you're aware of?
We don't know.
It's an old building that we're remodeling, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions. No question.
I don't have any questions either. Call a vote, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item nine, council reports, Mr. Debona, anything?
Yeah, with the Los Angeles County Veterans Council meeting, uh, this Friday, April eighth, there's gonna be a ceremonial commencement for all Vietnam veterans to receive a Canifor Wooten. It's the fiftieth anniversary, and it's gonna be one o'clock for Wooten.
When is that?
Uh, this Friday.
Friday?
One o'clock. So I thought that was a good thing. And I interviewed Ray Odom on the radio. It's a good thing, and they're looking towards, you know, more parades for veterans, say. And I think Linda Baron's gonna have a parade in May, possibly, and some other Fourth of July events.
Do you know about how many pins they're gonna get up?
I don't. I can get a number for you.
Which is quite a few.
Oh, yeah. Yes. And they had a big ceremony in Washington just five days ago. So thousands and thousands. Well, fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight soldiers lost their lives. And a lot of them.
Well, we have close to fifteen hundred vets in this county alone. How many more Vietnam vets?
Sure.
By the majority.
And a lot of them, I think, were a little bit embarrassed to even let the general public know after they came back from Vietnam that they were, they were actually dishonored. Uh, so this is kind of a nice thing for them.
Yeah, I talked to one gentleman who told me that when he got here, they told him to take off his uniform.
Yeah.
That was sad.
Very sad. So that's it. Mr. Rico?
Karen?
I, unfortunately, I missed the historic Main Street meeting on Friday, but when I get filled, I am all filled.
Well, I don't have a report, but I'd like to go back on what I said about talking, and Lee just, I mean, just, Bob just walked out, but about getting a program or something set up so we can see what's going on with the streets and stuff. And Central Park, I, I think we need to get on that. I think it's really important for that.
Um, today I went to the remote joint session of the county, and the mayor was there, and Councilman Grego, Councilman Thurman, and I believe Councilman Williamson, and I were both there online. And they basically heard a similar presentation to what we heard on March fifteenth from the group of individuals who wanted to talk about, uh, potentially asking for a trail to, from downtown to the peak and a multimodal station and those issues. And as I was sitting there listening to the discussion, I thought, after our work session, we really didn't have a discussion among council about our response to that. And I'm uncomfortable with us presenting any kind of position on those things until we've had that opportunity, because they're too critically important for the city. I think, you know, I know, Mayor, you have a lot of background knowledge that we need to know about. But I also think that just like any other issue of incredibly important economic consequence to the city, we should all have a chance to say what we're thinking, what approach, what strategy that we would prefer the city take. So that's, that's all I can share.
Piggybacking off of Aaron Ogletree's comment during that session today, um, I think they just need to let it breathe a little bit. Um, it's a win-win situation for everybody to have that, uh, trails and project going up by the highway to come to fruition. Um, but we can't step on each other's feet trying to get there, so.
Sorry, I didn't realize you were done. Um, Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Um, I was not able to attend the tourism meeting last week. Had another meeting going on. Uh, just to let everybody do know, uh, this is, two weeks ago, I attended the TPR meeting and, uh, while I was there, you know, I don't know if you'd heard that, and I pitched the multimodal. And, uh, you know, what they told me at that meeting, and of course, all of the three commissioners were on that meeting as well. And we were told that the multimodal, the building that they want to put will not fit and will not work in that place because it's just, there's just not enough room. So they said if we could find another suitable place, then they're willing to work with us. Just not how to finance it, the whole bit. So I think the whole thing is, uh, where do we move forward from here? Is something that we'll have to have a discussion on. Uh, we also had a, had a meeting with the Southwest Chief. It was a final meeting, joint session. And we had that with some of the, all of, all the members, but there were also some of the state legislators. We had Congressman Nogusi. Nogus was on there as well. And just trying to get some support moving forward with the new district that's moving forward.
Yeah, can I ask you a question on that, on particularly that? When are they gonna appoint those people to that? I mean, is there a time limit or when is that gonna be done that we can find out what's going on?
Just as I looked at them, I just got a letter earlier. I put my money, my name in there. I was not picked. So, uh, the only one that we have here in Trinidad will be, uh...
Luis.
Luis Lopez. He's the only one. And he has pretty no, he doesn't have any background on... But as a matter of fact, the other person that I was disappointed didn't get appointed was Rick Klein.
I was gonna say, and Rico was.
He has a lot more knowledge than I do even, because he's been on this since twenty-twelve. So what was interesting is they appointed one of the state legislators, Denia Esgar. So now they have, they'll have three appointees from Pueblo. One from Trinidad. Uh, I can't remember how many from Colorado Springs, one. Uh, there's three in Denver, and then there's some more further north. And then some of the other appointments, I'm not sure where they're from, but I'll find out. But I put my, I put my name in there, but I did not get an appointment.
That's sad. But it's, it's important that we did get somebody from Trinidad.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you could probably give Louis and talk about a lot of that stuff. And I am sorry about Klein because he really spearheaded a lot of that, and I was on the old council. I mean, he was really on it, and he's pretty intelligent. He knows exactly what goes on.
Yeah, he does. Really does. Not this last Sunday, but Sunday before last, I was asked to be on a questioning panel for the ambulance board candidates, and we had it at the Mular Murphy Funeral Home. And we interviewed seven people, the seven candidates. So my, I guess the information I have there is, for the people that are listening and all of us, please pay attention. Please vote. Uh, I guess if you're recording that, it's gonna be on YouTube as well as Channel seventy-one, really.
And election's May third.
And it's May third. So please, uh, go on, get some, listen to some of what they're answering for. Give you some ideas to who you want to vote for. There were some, there were some good candidates. Uh, this last week, I did an interview with the ambulance, with Albuquerque TV station about marijuana. And they just wanted to know what kind of impact that, uh, the sale of marijuana from New Mexico would have on Trinidad. And that's pretty much what it was. Interviewed for about a half an hour or so with them. Also attended the Action Twenty-Two meeting. And on April the twenty-ninth, uh, there's going to be a, it's an all-day summit. There's gonna be several breakouts. And one of the things, Mr. Valentine, I recommended is that we'll try to find out what times, because there's gonna be stuff on different utilities, uh, as well as funding. So we'll get you that information to, uh, maybe we can get some of our utility people, maybe Cheryl up there with terms of funding, if you wanna go. So that's gonna be April the twenty-ninth. It's an all-day thing, so. And the council, if, I guess, if any guys wanna go, we could.
Where is it?
It's gonna be in Pueblo. I'm not sure exactly, but the community college, I think, is what it's supposed to be. Yeah. Yeah. There's going to be again, uh, in that all-day summit, there will be talking a lot about housing and funding and legislation. So, you know, we've heard a lot about legislation, more funding coming, coming out. And, uh, as we were in that meeting, uh, Mike Beasley is actually the lobbyist for Action 22. And he told us that there's more funding becoming, becoming available. So it's just like, all, I, I really think that is, all it's doing is causing a lot of confusion. As a matter of fact, I mentioned to him that day, I said, what they need, they should do is take all these, put them all together and come up with something because anybody, all these things are, there's four or five different funding sources out there, and how do you, how do you grasp any one of them? So it, it just causes a lot of confusion, confusion to everybody. Something that I think, Mr. Valentine, I think, did you send something out about there's a, uh, change in wastewater regulations in 2027? There's some major legis, major legislative changes?
Public衆 mayor?
Yeah. There's, uh, there was a guy there that, I guess he's really big into the wastewater and water regulations. And he was talking about something in 2027 that's coming around, uh, that... Matter of fact, I might have that information already, I'll look and see if I have any emails. And what it really does, it really is going to put a lot of rural areas into, or out of compliance of what they're asking. And a lot of them that have ponds now may not be able to use them. So there are some major issues that are, you know, with this new 2027 regulation that's coming forward. And it says that even some of the municipalities might have some issues. I think the information that I received was from a company. And they're doing something different with wastewater, rather than having what we're doing now, there's something totally different. I'll, I'll get that to you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Valentine, when I, uh, I'm done, I'll turn that over. You mentioned the CDS.
Yes.
Sure. That's all I have. Well, I do have one more thing. Attorney General Weiser announced the final approval of the $26 billion opioid settlement. So that is, um, finalized. And Trinidad, Los Angeles County will begin the next $100,000 for the next 18 years. So, uh, it's pretty, pretty substantial. Another item is the traffic study tomorrow afternoon. What time, Mike?
Tomorrow afternoon at the community center from 5:00 to 7:00. It's, it's an open house. Not really a presentation per se, but all the boards will be out and the public can see and put in comments and get that final public comment to all the work they've been doing.
And is that the community center, not the college?
Community center. Community center.
Fisher's Peak is it?
College, yes.
Okay, yes, right.
Uh, last item I have is, uh, being that we have the, uh, master plan release next Monday on the 11th, that's going to, that's typically the date we have our work session. So we're going to work, we're going to move our work session over to Tuesday. And that will be at 1:00 PM, correct?
Uh, of course, yes, no, no. That's, Chris, I was, I wanted to interject. We, I thought we were going to have it Tuesday evening, but, uh, planning commission is already scheduled in here, and that's, that's their, their Tuesday. So I'd like to have it at 1:00 PM, along with a special meeting to go over, uh, the, uh, firms that applied to do the survey. So, thank you for that, Mayor.
Well, I caught me as I was walking in the door saying we're going to have it at 1:00 PM, so. Anything else, Mr. Valentine, you're up?
Nope, uh, just a reminder of the master plan on April 11th over at the college, uh, the work session. Thank you for that, Mayor, and special meeting. Uh, the traffic study was, uh, tomorrow night, Wednesday, for 5:00 to 7:00 at the community center. And then, uh, last Thursday, I believe it was, we, uh, we met with, um, staff from, uh, Senator Hickenlooper's staff regarding congressionally-directed funding. If you recall, last year, we scrambled because there was a, we thought it was a one-time ask. And we got, uh, our utility infrastructure, we, we put in requests to Senator Bennett's office and, uh, Senator Hickenlooper's for congressionally-directed funds, thinking it was a one-time deal. Well, for now, it's, it's, it's in the, it's re-energized and into law, I believe, is what we heard, where it's going to happen every year. So we have a deadline now of this Friday to put in, uh, for, uh, other projects. This time around, we're going to be strategic and try and pare them down if this is going to happen every year. Last time, we, we shot for the moon and, uh, shot too high. So, uh, but they, what they came back with was, uh, you know, those larger projects, the, there's the federal infrastructure bill and the ARPA monies that are out there. So that was their response to us. Be sure to, you know, look at those. But with this, um, opportunity, I think we may pare it down. Last time, the Fox Theater also put in for the full build-out. I think they requested 18 million. I think they would like to, as a nonprofit, the Fox Theater Alliance would like to put in for kind of a pared-down project as well, I think 2 million. So, but this is all coming together so fast, so, uh, with, with council's approval, I'm going to... Not beg for money, put in for the money and see if...
Making this okay.
Also, uh, yeah. And, and Talitha and, and is helping us through this process along with the department guys, so. It looks promising, I think they had 110 million?
Something like that.
Yeah. It's, it's kind of nationwide, but, uh, I, I think our two state senators, um, are able to do 110 million. So, we, we're hoping that, that happens. If you recall, we put in, I don't have a lot of detail, but we applied for the Doco grant that, we started with the white paper, and they kicked it back and said they needed collaborate and, and get more information. So we did that, we pulled back, and, and as we worked through the process, they wanted, uh... Targets seemed to move a bit on us every time we, we thought we had it. And, and they helped us through the process, but one of the, uh, issues was they wanted, um, partners to, uh, write letters of recommendation, and those partners, uh, did not want to. So, join us for whatever reason. Jared sent me an email where we got a response back that we were not successful. That was the inroad to start that centennial $10 million grant. I think, uh, with all the outside forces going to the state without our knowledge, hurt us a bit on that, so I just have to, I have to put it out there that, uh, we're not going to give up. We're going to continue to try and get that, but, um, the, the letter that, email, and I'll pass it on to council. I just looked at it, it, it kind of stated that you need to have a little more collaboration down there, basically, so. Kind of felt it coming, uh, it, it hit us, so. Lot of hard work into it, we're not going to give up. But we've got some hurts. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Did anyone have a question?
Yeah.
Look, let's see if we can... Okay, okay.
I'm curious who and why, but I...
No, all right. So, Mayor and council members, thank you. The only thing I want to comment on is Mr. Zietjes. And I want to say that nothing has changed. We are not in any way trying to be difficult or not make abundantly clear to them exactly what they need to do. Shortly after Mr. Zietjes, Mr. Landry, Ms. Schumaker were all here, shortly after that, I received a letter from Mr. Landry asking me to set forth exactly what they needed to do. And I did. And I sent him a letter on March 30th. And he, and I'm happy to send that to you. And he responded and said, "Thank you very much for your prompt response. I will convey that information to my client." And that was the last I have heard from Mr. Landry. And just so you know, and anyone who is curious, so they know, we had the, um, the, the drawing of the proposed premises that was the basis for your approval, we had that. And then later on, we had a new submission that had a large shaded area with a trailer at the top of the shaded area. And they said that was going to be our new premises. And we want to license that. And we didn't have a drawing of that as the premises. We just had a square in the shaded area that represented a liquor consumption area on a diagram of the whole property. So I told them, I told Mr. Landry that they need to elect what they're going to do. And if they're going to stick with the original plan, then what they need to do is they need to follow through on that. They need, you know, they need a cooking area, they need, um, an area where they're going to be serving and, and, uh, you know, and having the alcohol, they need ADA-compliant bathrooms, they need all the things that are required to have a restaurant-type facility. And again, I made that abundantly clear. So, I would just say, I don't know if Mr. Zietjes is not communicating with his lawyer or what is going on. But we, and really, Mr. Valentine, I, I don't mean to get defensive of him, but he really doesn't have anything to do with this. It's, it's basically lawyer to lawyer, as all of you know, and I am communicating with Mr. Landry at every turn. So, that's where it is, and we're not in any way trying to make this any more difficult than it has been already. Also, I will tell you, and I was going to send this here a text, but it's probably too involved to ask her, we can look into the possibility of refunding the, um, the application fee. I don't know what the precedent is for that, there's been a lot of work in connection with that fee. But if the normal precedent is if you want to withdraw your liquor license application, maybe we'll refund that in total. But I didn't want to make that representation tonight without knowing. So we, I will find out, and we will let all of you know.
Send that information from March, uh, March 30th to us, please?
I will, I will.
I'd like to see what...
As soon as we're done.
What was in that?
Happy to do it.
I want to see what was in there, because you and I had a discussion afterward on that. You know, like, like you said, I just think that, uh, if they want to move forward with what they had...
Right.
It's, it's easy, it's only complicated.
That's right.
If you want to screen, then it's not, they got to come back.
Exactly. Right, and we need to diagram, we need to know what they're proposing and where, where this on the property, that's absolutely right. We're not trying to play either ball or be difficult, we simply need to have them elect what they're going to do and pursue that.
And like, you know, I mentioned to you, if they decide to move forward with another plan, it'd be good to have an architectural plan of the design of, of something bigger than what we gave us the last time. It'd be nice to have so that we can make, have good questions.
Right.
Unless you're going to forward that corresponds to all of them?
I will, yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
When you're talking about refunding the money, is it, can you change the, a license? Like, he's applying for a restaurant license, could he change what that license is from a restaurant to something else?
I think he, well, it's already been approved. So I, I've never had anyone, you know, say, what, and I'm sure it can be done, I just don't recall it having happened, like saying I want to go from a hotel restaurant to a tavern liquor license or, or what have you. So, but it's been approved, not issued, so maybe, you know, that's what they're wanting to do.
That's for my education.
Right.
Anything else?
No, no, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Sound move?
Second?
Second.
Call a vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Will, Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.